This time I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To welcome everyone here this evening, the, um, the city council is connected uh by distance through Zoom and uh as in uh for the past number of meetings, the council members will have their, their devices on mute, except for when they're either voting or speaking. The um present at the emergency operations center, uh myself, Mayor Bob Burns, the city attorney, uh Dennis Simpson, city administrator Sharon Hanson, and staff that will have agenda items to prepare. There are fewer than ten that are present here at this time. We have an agenda before us. Are there any corrections to or additions or deletions to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. We will take the role for this meeting. I will call on uh city clerk Kyle Box to take the role, um, since uh the council is uh connected at a, at a distance. And I would say our city clerk also is connected by Zoom. So at this time, Kyle, will you take the role?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer. Steve Meister.
Present.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Present.
John De Kramer.
Present.
Russ LaBatt.
Present.
Jim Wazinski.
Present.
Thank you, Kyle. The uh, the council is present. We'll move then to agenda item number two, which is considered the approval of the minutes of the work session on May twenty-six, twenty-twenty. The um Kyle point of order, uh agenda item number two and agenda item number three with the minutes, uh can they be handled in one motion?
Yes, they can be.
Okay, so agenda item number three is the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on May twenty-sixth. So the council does have the minutes of the work session as well as the regular meeting, both on May twenty-sixth. Are there any corrections to note? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes of both meetings?
I'll make that.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim, to approve the minutes of the work session and the regular meeting on May twenty-sixth. We'll move to a vote. Kyle, would you, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Wazinski.
Yes, and Kyle Craig has joined us.
Okay.
Mayor, I apologize, I'm finally on.
Craig, uh, the, uh, do you care to vote on this item?
Uh, yes, yes.
So that motion does pass unanimously approving the minutes of both meetings. We'll move to agenda item number four then, which would be the Veterans Memorial bids and update on the uh Veterans Memorial at Memorial Park project. I'll turn uh first to Sharon who will then, do you have anything to say on this? Otherwise, I'll go right to Preston.
Uh Preston Stensrude's gonna give a presentation of the bids, and I know that um community advocate for the project, Mark Clay, does wanna just give a general overview on the status and on donations and where they're at.
Okay, so Mark, you may want to preposition yourself over by the podium also. So with that, Preston?
Um, tonight, Mark and I are here just to give an update on, on where we're standing with the Veterans Memorial Park. Um, that's dated back, you know, several years to get to this point, and um we're at where we feel is a solid plan. Um, we went through um several um bidding during kind of the um COVID stuff, and we were hoping to bring this um when the meeting was back all in person, um but we need to move forward. So we just opted to come even though it's via Zoom and stuff. So um with that, I'll just kinda touch base on where we're at. Uh, from, from a concrete standpoint, um we're rated at about nine thousand square feet of concrete to get poured. And we did receive um bids from Hes- Hiskin Construction and Hess Concrete. Hess Concrete was the low um bid with a total price of fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Um, if awarded, he would plan to start either next week, um weather dependent, um and he's also um subject, he's got a project out of town, he's gotta finish up. So just how much rain we get or don't get will change that. Otherwise, for sure, the following week, the twenty-second of June, um I spoke with him today. So fifty-seven thousand, one twenty-seven for Hess Concrete to do all the flatwork. Um, with that, um a major part of the um construction at the Veterans Memorial is the war memorial wall um that we had um designed in the architectural concept. Um, we did a little modifying to fit our budget and stuff like that. Um, and then we did have both fabricators in town um bid on the project. Uh Marshall Machine Shop submitted a bid of forty-five thousand dollars, and Bendrite Fabrication submitted a bid of forty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars. Um, both would have that wall finished and installed by late summer. After all the concrete is done, the wall would kinda be the last piece. Um, those are the two major um components of the Veterans Memorial. Um, there's of course statues and landscaping and other stuff that's gonna go into it, but those are the um high-dollar items to work towards completion. And I'll let Mark just speak towards kinda where we're at on um donations, budget, stuff like that.
Okay, thank you, Preston. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Um, Preston, it's finally coming to getting this project done. I wanna thank Preston, first of all, for doing a lot of the legwork on it, and the community is really behind this. Uh, we've talked to, um, there's a number of contractors that have just donated things towards this project to get it done. Right now, I think we're out just about under two-hundred thousand in donations. Uh, there's pot, uh, it's still coming in. We have about another thirty-six thousand to come in from uh another organization. So we're under budget, uh, which is a good sign. We still have money coming in. So the community is, I mean, they're excited about this project. I think it's gonna help doing this project this year just because of the COVID thing and all of the things to bring this community back together again and show them that we are moving forward. So uh I'm excited. Uh, I've been, I call press about once a week to find out when we're gonna start pouring concrete so we can see some, something happen. So again, anybody's got any questions?
We'll open it up for uh questions from the council, either on the concept design for Mark or on the bids for Preston. Questions?
Mister Mayor, Russell Batty, I have a question for Preston. On the uh, I'm gonna go to the Hess Concrete bid. It says four-inch concrete walk price to include items. Number one, a project scope, labor only. Does this include labor and concrete or just labor?
Um Hess's price, or actually Hess and Hiskin's price would be the labor portion only. Um, we have a um donation slash agreement with Buffalo Ridge. Um, they're giving us twenty dollars or twenty-five dollars off contractor pricing on all concrete used for the project. There's no limit. Um, so we, we are better to go that way. And plus, we'd get it tax um free um doing that also. Um, I think the total amount of concrete, we figured is like twelve thousand dollars is what it's gonna kinda be close to amounting to.
So concrete is included in this price, partially?
Uh, it is not included in the price. We'll, the city will pay Buffalo Ridge direct for however much quantity is needed.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions for either Preston or Mark? If not, thank you, Preston, for your work on this. Thank you, Mark, for your leadership on uh what will be a lasting memorial at Memorial Park. You have the recommendation, Council. What's the wishes of the council?
Um, this is John De Kramer. I will make a motion to approve the uh bids as recommended.
I'll second.
Motion by John, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, Kyle, will you take the vote?
Mayor Burns, just for clarification, this is a recommendation for, for both?
Yes, uh, John, your motion was the award the bid to Hess Concrete and Bendrite Fabrication, correct?
Yeah, that is correct for both recommendations.
And that is the understanding of the second?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Kyle, yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Wazinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Thank you, Kyle. We'll move then to, and thanks, Preston, thank you, Mark. We'll move then to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening. And they include the wastewater treatment facilities uh project. We have an application uh for payment to Magni Construction, an invoice to American Engineering Testing, and consider the invoice to Bolton and Ming. Next on the consent agenda would be the, consider the vacation of the easement in the Wilkie Miller using seventh edition, receiving the petition for the vacation utility easement and calling for a hearing. Uh, also on the consent agenda is update on the law enforcement repairs and the bills and the project payment. So is there any item on the, on the consent agenda that any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve the items on the consent?
So move. Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll go to a vote. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yeah.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Wazinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Thank you. We'll move then to the first item, a new business, which is agenda item number nine. Uh, consider the resolution and um that would award the sale in the general obligation bonds series twenty-twenty-B. I'm gonna check in with uh Net Storm. Uh, I know um uh Terry Heaton is gonna join us. Is she on?
Yes, she is.
Okay, so I will turn to Annette first to introduce this item. I, now I do see Terry's, and then uh then you can also then introduce Terry from Baker Tilly.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Um, tonight is the final step in our bonding um process for formal um approval of the sale of general obligation bonds twenty-twenty-B. Um, tonight, Terry Heaton with Baker Tilly, she's our financial advisor. Um, it has a short um PowerPoint to go through the results of the sale and also of our credit rating.
Welcome, Terry.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and Annette. Um, there's a very brief PowerPoint, and I'm doing this because I'm not there in person, so I just wanna make it a little, little clearer. And so thank you for launching that. Um, oops, and, and let's go to the second page, please, sorry. There we go. Thank you. Um, the, the sale of bonds were, that, that we were authorized to do was the last month, whereas a two million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollar general obligation bond. And the projects that it included are listed below, uh Freedom Park Bathroom, South Fourth Street and South First Street uh reconstruction, equipment certificates for, for SCBA pack and mask and the dump trunk, and uh utility bonds for Buffalo Ridge Basin and Merritt Pond Outlet piping. Um, and so that was, that was what we, we uh included, and we found four different types of bonds to issue for that. And again, as, as uh Marshall has always done, is we lump them into one bond issue for cost savings on the cost of issuance. Next slide, please. This is just a, a grid. We've been hearing a lot about interest rates with um what's going on in the market. And if this is for the last five years, the black line is general obligation bonds, and this is an index of all bond types, all GO bonds, sorry, um and all credit ratings. And it's just an index that's maintained. And as you can see, um, in the last few months in particular, it has uh really gone down in this area. And as you'll see, that, that is a huge benefit to the city tonight. Next slide, please. These are the results. Um, this, the uh bids were received in our offices at ten AM today. We received eight bids, which is a high number representing twenty-nine financial institutions. Uh, the bids uh came in, this is a ten-year bond, but probably two-thirds of the principal is repaid within eight years. So it's a little bit of mix and terms that align with the revenue streams. Uh, the eight bids, the ranges were point eight-three percent to one point two-eight percent. And yes, you are reading that correct. I had to call the office and double-check that we had something below one percent. The low bid came from UMB Bank. Um, and the, there was a premium bid, and again, when we award the bonds, it's on the true interest costs, and so it's a combination of coupon rates and purchase price. Um, because the purchase price exceeded the two million, six fifty, we were able to use that cash to reduce the bond issue. So the bond issue will only be for two million, four hundred and seventy thousand, although you'll receive full amount of funding for this project. Next slide, please. And again, this is comparing our estimate from a month ago to today. So it's not true savings, but um it gives an indication of where markets are going. So on April twenty-one, we were estimating an interest rate of one point seven-one percent. And today, following that line, it came in at point eight-three percent, which is about half of where we were. Um, and then the average debt, it's a smaller bond issue, so even though it's a tremendous um in uh reduction in rates, the savings um make, they're monthly savings of two hundred and eighty-four thousand, dropping to two hundred and seventy-two thousand. So over the life of the bonds, about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in savings. So fantastic results. And again, I had to call our office a couple times to make sure I was understanding or reading the numbers right, and these are verified. And, and as far as an explanation for why the rates are so much lower than our estimates a month ago, it's, it's very difficult to gauge because we're hearing things about the pandemic, how long it might last. We hear about the stock market rising, but now that it's at a very high amount, should you get out of it and go to something safer? And so there could be a flee, uh, some, some coming into uh several bidders looking at something more fixed and stable. Next slide, please. The city has a very high credit rating. It's a double A as rated by S and P. And as you can see, there's a lot of uh ratings below that, and only two above. And so that's a very high rating for a, a regional center in Minnesota, the tax-based size that you have. And that helps you get the very uh low interest rate that you do. And the next slide is the last slide, Mister Mayor, if you're wondering how long this is gonna go. Um, and it's just a summary of uh what was in the, in the report. It does say you have a weak economy, and I know that you work on that, and you're trying to grow it, and it just has to do with the average house price um in incomes as compared to the United States as a whole. Um, the reason I've highlighted strong management and good financial policies and practices is that sometimes we get good feedback. Uh, but this was very, very enthusiastic, strong feedback from the reading agency, who commented in particular, uh Sharon Hanson and Annette Storm, who were on the call, really uh were strategic, they were honest, transparent, she felt really good, and just felt super comfortable with the management at the city of Marshall, even during a COVID, and, and or whatever was gonna happen going forward felt. Um, she mentioned several times, she just felt so confident and good after the reading call. So I wanted to share that with the city council because she was very impressed. Um, next item is adequate budgetary performance. Actually, they assessed you as a strong budgetary performance, but as a contingency, they're notching everybody down one, so that's why it says adequate. Very strong budgetary flexibility, very strong liquidity, and we've talked about the weak debt position um that they have to do on the raw score. Um, but then you get a plus because you're paying back bonds uh within ten years. Seventy-seven point five percent of all the city's debt will be repaid, which is a string. And again, these bonds have a ten-year term, but probably two-thirds of the principal uh is being paid back over an eight-year term. So with that, we uh certainly want to recommend the, the low bid at point eight-four percent. And uh it's just, this is the lowest interest rate I've ever seen since I've been doing this. So congratulations.
Thank you, Terry, for your uh, your presentation and your work on this. Annette, anything more you have to add?
No.
We'll open up for any input or questions from the council. If not, uh, is there a uh motion for the awarding of the sale um as recommended by our financial advisor?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If there's no discussion, will, Kyle, will you take the vote?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
No.
Jim Wazinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Thank you very much, Terry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Awesome job. Great news.
Congratulations.
We'll move then to agenda item number ten. Uh, this is uh the Red Baron Arena Chiller repairs. Uh, Sharon, do you wanna introduce this? And then we'll also have Preston and Cody Malantine is uh in the room also.
In the last uh couple weeks, we've had some discussion about reopening the ice at Red Baron Arena and uh discovery of some, some equipment failures that we've uh experienced there. So uh this is a culmination of, of all those discussions into a request for action um to correct the issue. And Preston Stensrude and Cody Malantine have been the leads on this, and they will present the background information.
Welcome again, Preston.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, just to give a, kind of a brief synopsis, or I'll try and be brief and hopefully touch every point. Um, I believe we shut down uh March nineteenth, or somewhere around there, for um the COVID stuff as arenas weren't allowed to be open. Um, and then we were kinda given a partial green light uh to start up June one. Um, so the weekend of Memorial Weekend, um we were gonna start cooling down the um slab on the Lockwood Rink. Um, and when Cody went to do that, um we had all kinds of safety alarms when we tried to go to activate the system. Um, and we were in a, like a twenty-eight vacuum on our um refrigeration system, which is like unheard of. Um, so Cody called uh Carlson Stewart, um and they came out Tuesday after Memorial Day and started doing some um diagnosing, um which led us to find the chiller on the shell side where all the ammonia normally would sit was completely full of brine. Um, I think they pumped out two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty gallons of brine um that had filled the chiller where it wasn't supposed to be. Gated farther, took the chiller apart, um had Chris from Midwest Boiler out of Sioux Falls came down within the next couple days. He's got an instrument to pressure test. There's four hundred and ninety-eight pipes in the chiller itself um to start pressure testing to figure out where the failure came from. Um, in those first half or the top half of the pipes, we found seventeen pipes that failed due to corrosion. Um, Carlson Stewart, they themselves, and they called several other refrigeration companies, have never seen a chiller fail um to the extent that our chiller failed. Um, normally, they see it on the shell side where the ammonia sits, not from the brine side to the ammonia. It usually goes the opposite way. Um, they're, they're have not an exact reason for why. Their engineers came out. Um, and look, they called the company. We've done everything. There's not a single uh reason to determine why this happened. We don't, I mean, we could speculate on multiple things, but we don't, we don't have a good reason. Um, I know in the memo I talked about the analysis of the brine will help us determine. We did get that back about two o'clock this afternoon. There's nothing defective in the brine. There's a little bit of iron, four parts per million. They would like us, once we get back up and uh running, they would um highly recommend filtering our brine um before it goes to catch these irons, but that in itself did not cause the corrosion of the pipes. All the other numbers looked good. Uh, we have a twenty-two percent um calcium chloride mix. It tested out at twenty-one. So we're right where we were four years ago, um leading me to think the only thing that we could have got is bad piping in the chiller when it was manufactured. Um, I'm not saying that's what it was, but that's about what we're down to. Um, so where we stand today, uh this chiller is a custom-made chiller for our arena. Um, there's not just, we can't just go buy this chiller sitting in a warehouse somewhere or anything and get shipped here. Um, it's twelve weeks out if we were to order this exact same chiller. Um, very expensive to replace. Um, it's a, it's very heavy. I think it's like fifty-seven hundred or fifty-nine hundred pounds. It won't fit through the door, so we'd have to cut a hole in the wall or something. I mean, it would lead to many other things. So our best option, in our opinion, is to have Midwest Boiler put four hundred and ninety-eight new pipes in. He'll pressure test them all and get it all, flush it all out and get it back to new. Um, and Carl Stewart, Carlson Stewart has been working diligently to clean all the lines because the ammonia and brine mixed together compromising our system. Um, so we wanna make sure that everything's flushed good, so when we start back up, we don't have a problem later. Um, so we don't wanna cut any corners. In there, I kinda had as an estimate, uh seventy to eighty thousand. We're gonna be real close to that eighty thousand. Thirty-four thousand on the pipes. Carlson Stewart did get us a quote today. Um, and we're at like forty-seven thousand for all the repairs and flushing. Um, there was purge valves that we never had in the system. They didn't have no idea why we never had purge valves, but they recommend adding them in while we got the lines cut. Um, so we really need to fix our problem and get stuff in that if we ever have maintenance later, it'll be easier than how it is now, because now our only thing was to cut the ammonia line, and there was no way to take it apart. Um, so that price includes all that. Um, we filter the brine. Um, we did, we were thinking we might have to pump out all the brine, which is like six thousand gallons, um which I think that was like a twenty-four thousand dollar cost. That is now came off. Um, so we're, we're right in that eighty to eighty-five, I'd say, um to get back up and running, everything flushed, all the pipes re-insulated, everything repaired. Um, I did speak with um a gentleman from Hartford Steam Boiler, our insurance agent, um that covers the equipment out there. Um, we were under the impression that we had a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible. It is actually a ten thousand dollar deductible, but he hasn't guaranteed that it's gonna be covered yet. Um, they're gonna do a little bit more investigating. I have to send them all of our pictures and stuff tomorrow. Um, and then we'll work through it. Um, there is a engineer from the League of Minnesota Cities um on their insurance side coming out on Thursday to do a little bit more investigative stuff also. Um, so with that, I mean, that's kinda where we're at. Until the chiller is fixed, we can't have ice. Whether that's the summer, fall, winter, we can't do anything till it's fixed.
And the estimated time to repair?
Um, Chris from Midwest Boiler, unless something has changed, but I think as of this morning or yesterday, said if we let him know tonight after this, this approves, he'll be here tomorrow morning um to start. He's gotta pull, hydraulically pull all these pipes out one at a time. He'll get it all flushed. Takes like a week or two weeks to get the new pipes, but he'll be ready when they come. Carlson Stewart's done everything they can to where we're at. Um, so we're kind of in a holding pattern. Um, once Chris can move forward and get the pipes in, Carlson Stewart would wrap up on their end, do a final flush, and we'd be back online. Um, our goal would be to have ice um available to be used June twenty-ninth.
Okay.
If everything goes as planned.
Thank you. Uh, Sharon, you gonna add anything to this? We'll open up for, first off, Preston, uh, you know, this was unforeseen, and both you and your staff at the arena um have uh gone through a lot to try to identify what the, what the issue is, identify all the potential. um have uh gone through a lot to try to identify what the what the issue is, identify all the potential causes, rule out um, you know, any um causes that could have been uh prevented, so. First off, I recognize you.
Yep. Yep, we went, kind of went through all that. You know, there's some speculation of shutting down is what caused it. That had absolutely nothing to do. It just so happens that the pipes finally corroded through while we were shut down. It would have happened while we were running too, and then we would have had a mess. Or, you know, say what happened during the winter, we would have had to shut down and cancel the rest of the season too, so.
Yeah, well, of course, I, you know, this certainly is not a good thing, but it's better now than in November.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, we'll open up for input questions from the council from or either uh um Preston or Cody.
Uh John De Kramer, I do have a question.
Yes, John.
Okay, uh Preston, is there uh any possibility of the, once the pipes that have been removed, maybe could get analyzed to see if there was a um problem with the metal?
Do you know, did Chris anything? I'll let Cody answer that because he worked with Chris as they pulled out some of these pipes, and I'm not sure um what that what might look like.
Okay, so introducing this arena manager, Cody Malantine.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Um we can look into that. That's a possibility. Carlson Stewart did cut one of them in half, and they found out that there's definite pitting and corrosion inside of them. Um as far as analyzing them, we can, we can see if that's an option. That hasn't been proposed yet.
Okay. John, anything more on that question?
Uh no, just thank you. I think it'd be advantageous uh if it is possible to get an analysis uh done on the material just to see if there was, you know, anything we can identify to avoid in the future.
Do you have a comment on that, Dennis?
No, I think it's a good suggestion, John, to follow through with the analysis of the pipe.
Other questions input from the council?
Mister Mayor?
Yes, Craig.
Yeah, um this is for both Cody and Preston, I think. A couple ones. I know that you guys had the brine analyzed. Uh did they look at the inhibitors? Was, is that sufficient? I guess I'm a little bit concerned about, you know, making sure that we confirm that the brine is fine and that there was no problem with it if that was part of the the cause. And then if we do do the analysis, or I'm I'm curious, Cody, when you guys looked at that pipe, were they, Carlson Stewart able to determine was the corrosion started on the glycol side or on the brine side? Or I guess it would have been on the on the ammonia side. And if so, I mean, one of the other discussions, is there the ability to put cathode action in there, give it a sacrificial piece? Doesn't eat away on a pipe?
Um so the corrosion, that's why they cut the, one of the pipes in half, and the corrosion definitely started on the inside, which would be the the brine or calcium chloride side. And that's where the pitting was. There was a little bit on the outside once we finally opened it up. But we determined that that just leaked through all the pinholes that we found in the pipes.
Were they, were they able to determine if the if the corrosion inhibitor was present or if it was adequate? Because I guess I don't know if if that's a, if that's a depleting item or if, you know, if that has to be replenished. I mean, you know, the, so I just, I just want to make sure that the brine is is, that we're not taking a gamble putting that brine back in, even though there's an additional cost to cycle it out. Maybe that's, you know, I'm just not sure.
Sure, and our initial thought was we were going to get rid of all the all the brine, the calcium chloride and renew it just so we were safe. But after this test um from Chemtechs, which is a company out of Lakeville, Minnesota, they said um they're starting to do more and more testing of brine in arenas. Um it's kind of a a newer technology. These days, it's used much more often. Um but they said all our numbers were within range as far as any inhibitors or anything like that. Um like Preston mentioned, the only thing that was high was a little bit of iron. And we're not sure if that was from maybe a hard water used initially when they made the the brine or uh possibly from the breakdown of the pipes. Um some iron got in it during the.
Yeah, I was going to say that that might actually be the the remnants of our of our depleted pipe. Okay, thank you. I really appreciate it.
Other input from the council?
How old are the pipes and what is the normal useful life of pipes?
Well, there's a broad range, and from everyone we've talked to, basically in the whole upper Midwest, as far as refrigeration specialists and brine specialists, um ours are just about five years old. But um they've, I've heard one person say they've seen them go bad in five years. But for the majority of them, they've seen them last fifteen, twenty, thirty plus years.
Other questions?
Mister Mayor, Russ?
Russ, I believe you're on mute.
Question for Dennis. Um is there, is there any way that we could go back to the company or manufacturer? If we find out that the pipe was defective or anything like that, could we go back and and onto them? And maybe, I don't know if it was installation that was wrong or defective pipe, or do we have any legal ramifications?
I I would think so, Russ. I think that's the follow up to John De Kramer's question earlier. Can we analyze the pipe to see what what might have been wrong? And if if that leads us in the direction of faulty materials, yes, we then have to follow through with.
Well, that's good to hear because, you know, Cody said that he's, you know, he's, he's talked to a lot of other people and and pipes last. It's very uncommon that they only last five years. They last fifteen or plus. So I would think that there had to be something wrong, but I'm just speculating. I'm I'm nowhere near an expert, so I'll just uh.
Nor am I, but I think that that's what the analysis.
Okay.
They're looking for, looking for reasons for what might have caused that.
Dennis, would that be also the um the role of our League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust? Through Boiler Insurance?
Yeah, and that was going to be, I'm sorry, Mister Mayor, that was going to be my question too with it, with the engineer coming out from League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. Hopefully that they would help with that, with that analysis so that they could uh subrogate that loss back to the pipe supplier if that's where the problem lies. It's not different than the Magellan pipeline through here or the Enbridge Line Three that's under all of the scrutiny is that that's actually a problem with materials that's caused the need to replace that. So it would certainly be not out of the realm of possibility here.
This is just in the very beginning stages, you know, first we have to get the problem corrected, but then let's analyze what the problem was. And that's why we have insurance, I think. You know, they're already involved by helping with the analysis.
Other input?
Mister Mayor, I would just echo one other thing, and I believe it was yourself that said it, that, you know, even in the letter that we received from Carlson Stewart, you know, the first inclination would usually be there, but there's some type of human error, but, you know, they ruled that out entirely. So again, that's a credit to our staff that they have done nothing wrong. In fact, they've been, they've gone over and above, I think, to make sure that everything that they've been doing has been correct. So compliments to them as well.
Any other input? The recommendation then is to provide the authorization for staff to move forward with the repairs needed.
I move the recommendation.
John De Kramer, I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion on that motion?
I have one quick question here.
Yes, please.
Are we going to buy the pipes from the same supplier that we originally bought them from?
No, this is a different company. They originally came from a manufacturer up in Canada.
Did you, were you able to hear that, Glenn?
Yes, I was. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle, will you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler?
No.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russell Labatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Thank you, Preston. Thank you, Cody. You have one more thing?
Yeah, I was just going to um let you guys know going forward, Carlson Stewart does do our preventative maintenance. We rebuild one compressor a year. We're gonna, they suggest doing this brine test every four to five years. We are now going to put that in an annual thing so we can catch it ahead of time, and we'll, we'll see how good that filter is working and stuff like that. So hopefully, if we see something going awry, we can catch it right away versus not knowing, you know. You have no way to see these pipes inside this chiller because it's all wrapped in insulation, so this would hopefully catch it. And if we got to, you know, drain something or add inhibitors or whatever that is, we'll know hopefully in advance.
Thank you, Preston. I think one other thing to add is um we are fortunate, I mentioned earlier. We're, we're fortunate it happened now and not November. We're also fortunate that we have a firm like Carlson Stewart in town. So we have that expertise locally that can work with us in resolving this problem.
Yeah, they've been very um good to us in explaining, you know, what's going on and telling us what they would recommend to do. And we're basically just taking their lead, whatever they recommend to do. That's what we're going to do to make sure we don't cut ourselves short.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on then to the uh next agenda item. The uh, this would be the uh, consider the amendment to the Professional Services Agreement for the Marshall Hotel demolition. Sharon?
Mister Mayor and Council, um this particular agreement is an addition to the existing agreement as a result of the the forward action of the city council to demo the uh hotel next to City Hall. In the, in the agreement with Engen, it does specify in the project understanding under number three, what the demo adds to the complexity of the City Hall project. Um there was a discussion prior to seeking out this, this particular contract that it's important to have um coordination with the contractor for City Hall, which is Brennan Construction, uh and then also the um architect. Again, because there'll be some additional modification because the the hotel will not be there. So uh really having kind of the same knowledge base being shared for both City Hall and the demo project of the hotel was really important, and uh this particular agreement allows for that. You will note that the um total cost is not to exceed twenty five thousand, six hundred and ninety six dollars. Um and so it could be lower than that amount. We consider this to be separate from City Hall because it's a result of the hotel demo. And um further, the City Hall Committee did meet on June third, reviewed this contract and recommended approval and to bring it forward for the full council for for their approval. And I will pause and um ask if the chairman of the City Hall Committee, James Lozinski, wants to say anything or any of the um the the two other council members, council member Labatt or De Kramer.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Uh input from the City Hall Committee on this?
Um the only thing I'd like to add is, you know, as we go through this, like Sharon said, we need to um, we need to make sure we do it right. And I just want to make sure we, when the public asks about this, this is a cost that is not, as Sharon said, not associated with City Hall. If they tore the hotel down, we would have had to do some of this anyway. So it's it's a bookkeeping thing that, you know, it's a cost that comes with the hotel. They're going in conjunction, but so we explained to the public that we're not going over budget on City Hall because this is a separate item for the removal of a, an ice ore in downtown Marshall.
Other, uh any other questions or input from the council? Any questions on the recommendation?
You know, Mister Mayor?
Yes, Steve.
So there's been a lot of um talk to me about the uh remaining parking issue. And I know we've addressed the parking issue, but the public obviously still has some issues with it. Has the committee put any consideration into utilizing that as a parking space?
Um Steve, I can answer that question. I believe in the redesign of the 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 park or the lot there, there's additional four, I believe it was four spots or five spots that can go in there. And Kyle actually counted out, if still on Kyle, I believe you said we could get all the city vehicles out of the parking lot into the, behind City Hall and into this new vacated space, correct?
That is correct, yes.
So that would free up a lot of parking for use downtown then in the city council or City Hall?
Correct.
Thank you.
And of course, the, that, the plan for the the vacated space, uh we will see a couple options probably from the uh landscape architect that will come back, that will have that parking as well as some green space there. So thank you, Jim, for that explanation too. Uh any other input from the council? If not, uh you have the recommendation, what's the wishes?
I'll make the motion to approve the recommendation. I'll second John De Kramer.
Motion by Jim, seconded by John. Discussion? If there's no discussion, Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler?
No.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russell Labatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to the next agenda item, uh agenda item number twelve. Consider the ratification of the resolution in agreement with the temporary outdoor dining. The uh addressing this will be Jason Anderson, Director of Public Works City Engineer. And since this uh issue came up because of the right of way, it may be a non-issue because of the modification of the governor's orders, but I'll let you go ahead.
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. Uh the state of Minnesota has authorized the use of state right of way for outdoor dining through Executive Order twenty dash seventy. And that was approved on June third. Um in the, so MinDOT wants the individual cities to handle all of the permitting for this uh permitting process. They don't want individual restaurants approaching them for permits. So last week, late last week, the city did follow through with application to the state's Department of Transportation for the the permit. Uh Administrator Hanson and Mayor Burns worked together to uh put the resolution piece together. So now we're here in front of the council asking to ratify that decision and and approve this resolution to um to authorize this. The restaurant affected in this case was Bello Caccina that wanted to put some tables on MinDOT right of way on the sidewalk. And we wanted to expedite the process to ensure that they could do that.
Sharon, anything you want to add?
Jason, just a follow up question. Um this particular restaurant was approved for the permit last Friday. Uh have we had any other requests or do you foresee any future requests where this might be utilized?
We've not had any other requests for this might be utilized, and I really don't see any for uh MinDOT right of way.
Questions from the council? If not, is there a motion to ratify that resolution?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Discussion?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russell Labatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
The motion does pass. We'll move to agenda item number thirteen. Consider the amendment to the MinDOT uh Maintenance and Operations Agreement. Once again, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. Um at the May twenty sixth meeting, the council authorized the acceptance and execution of the FAA CARES grant funding in the amount of sixty nine thousand dollars. Um this, what we're bringing forward tonight is is from MinDOT Aeronautics. They're requiring a amendment to our existing agreement with them for uh maintenance and operation at the airport. We have an existing grant agreement where they, but they do provide us some funds. Um they're requiring the CARES grant to be uh added into that grant because they administer those funds. So uh this seems pretty straightforward from our end. It's kind of a processing that that's required for us to allow them to give us the money, so.
Any questions for Jason?
Jason, this is just basically housekeeping, right?
Yeah, this is entirely housekeeping. Yep.
Any other questions? If not, is there a motion?
I move the amendment.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle, please.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Labatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Thank you, Jason. We'll move then to agenda item number fourteen. Consider appointments to various boards, commissions, and authorities. The um we're in this time where um the entire council is not able to gather and uh do our typical application and appointment process where the entire council interviews applicants. Uh, we had a opening on the Economic Development Authority. We had one applicant. I um met with that applicant. Strutman be appointed to the term that will, on the uh Economic Development Authority that will expire May thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. I offer that as a recommendation that would entertain a motion to affirm.
So moved.
John De Kramer, I will move, uh, second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Labatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to a a commission board liaison reports. I'll start from the um Southwest Regional Development Commission does meet this Thursday, and one of the items they will be uh presented with is the um a fund that I've spoke of in the past, but I chair the Regional Revolving Loan Fund, which has been in place since nineteen ninety-five. The um uh with the federal stimulus acts that have been passed, the region is uh eligible to also receive one point four eight million dollars to have a separate revolving loan fund to address the COVID-nineteen um related economic impact on businesses and organizations in the region. So this Thursday, the, our committee has met, will present this Thursday to the Board of Directors of the Regional Development Commission, and assuming their approval, that loan fund will be available. This one point four eight million dollars would be available um and would really need to be utilized within the first year or two. Uh, and if it's not utilized, that means that it's uh not necessary, so it's going to be moved, pulled back and moved to another area of the country. Assuming that is loaned out, then it would be zero percent interest for the first year, and then very low in- interest rate for the rest of the term of that loan, which would be pegged at seventy-five percent of prime, which right now that would be two point two percent for the remaining uh term of the loan, and the term of the loan would be dependent on the nature of what is uh, what is, what the borrowing is for. If it was for something shorter term, like working capital, it would be a shorter term. If it was for land or building, it would be, of course, longer term. Uh, once the principal is repaid, then it's retained in the region uh for future relending uh not, you know, and once it's uh uh revolved, then the restrictions on on um impact from COVID-nineteen would not uh would not stick any longer. The application process will be actually pretty straightforward. Appraisals and things that take time won't be required, so the intent is to uh receive this uh funding and then put it to work as soon as possible. So I mentioned that in detail because I think this will really be an asset to businesses, not only in our community, but in the nine-county region. With that, um, we'll move to um Craig?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Steve?
So from my Community Services Advisory Board, we did meet. Um, we talked a little bit about the pool and the hopes that with the governor dialing back things that we can get uh back to uh all the activities for the youth and community services. That's on a day-by-day basis. Uh, the pool, um we talked a little bit about plans going forward for it, uh and um that was it. We hadn't met since uh last uh winter, actually, because of the COVID issue, so it was good to get back together. Everybody met virtually, and we look forward to doing that. We did also have the EDA meeting. It was a quick meeting, so I'll defer that to Mr. De Kramer. The Cable Commission did not meet.
Hey, thank you, Steve. Glenn?
Uh, Housing Commission met yesterday. Uh, every month, we look at the operating statements. We look at accounts receivable, accounts payable. We look at the occupancy report. Um, we're still working on the financial policy and and hopefully we'll get the revisions approved at our next meeting, and then they had the election of officers. Uh, Planning Commission will meet tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. John?
As far as the EDA meeting, there was a meeting on June fourth uh for a public hearing uh regarding a sale of a lot in um out in our addition, so we sold another lot uh out in Parkway Addition. Uh, MMU Commission has had several meetings in the past uh couple of weeks, uh primarily with the in uh interviewing for replacement for Brad Rose as general manager. Believe we've been announced, uh although the commission officially votes on it at their next meeting, uh the commission did come to a decision on a new general manager. Uh, David Shelkoff was the individual that was hired. Uh, he's got a nice uh wide uh um range of uh experience in the utility business, having worked for a uh investor-owned utility, a co-op, and a uh public uh utility. So he comes with a lot of experience and familiarity with our system and types of work, so they're working on the transition at this point. Uh, that'll occur in August, uh transitioning over to a new general manager. And I would say that uh thank you to Mayor Burns and to uh Sharon Hanson for taking part in the interviews last week. Uh, uh, their input was appreciated by the commission. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. The, we'll move then to Russ?
Uh, Library Board met last night, and uh a lot of the conversation was regarding the COVID-nineteen and and the effect that it has on the library. Just for everybody's information, the cottonwood and balliton branches continue to remain closed due to the COVID-nineteen restrictions and guidelines. But on a positive side, staff is delivering to those to those communities with curbside pickup, including the daycare, so those communities are getting serviced out of the Marshall office. That brings up another thing is that we're looking at maybe possibly uh doing something with the van. We've spent about twenty-five hundred dollars on it recently, and we're looking maybe at at uh selling that van and maybe getting a different one, but we're just kind of, everything is on hold for the time being. We also talked about Plum Creek, uh since their budget is is July one to June fiscal year. Uh, they're finalizing the budget from last year and working on next year that, and that everything goes through the state. And Michelle reported that for the first time in ten or eleven years, uh Plum Creek is in good shape. But the majority of the reason for that is that they do not have uh no expense for the director or manager, so that's all I have on the library and police advisory and CBP have not met.
Okay.
Thank you.
And um Jim? Jim, you may be muted.
Um, the only committee of mine that has met was the City Hall Committee. Uh, you know, we had a couple items come up, one that we want for some discussion tonight, so we'll all get to partake in this discussion. As we tear down the hotel on the next door, there has been back and forth discussion in the committee about a potential firewall on the, I'd call it the east side of City Hall. Um, two reasons why we we possibly need one, but we don't need one. Um, if we do not connect the two lots into one lot, by code, we would need to put up a firewall. So tha- that's one option is we connect the lots, we can eliminate the firewall. The other discussion that came up is if we'd ever sell that lot and put a building there, well, then we've already done the firewall inside of City Hall, so we wouldn't have to do it at that time if that was ever redeveloped. Um, my opinion is to connect the two lots, save the cost on the firewall, and build it that way. To me, it's a cost that I don't think we need to um pay for. So uh it, I would like, it's something we'd like to have for discussion, to give recommendations to the city staff. Just not my opinion.
Okay, are there any questions on that uh on the issue from the council or the committee?
Uh, this is John De Kramer. Uh, my only comment to add to what Jim said is uh uh I think really uh we wanted to involve the council in the decision if it would be that uh we at least think for the time being that that lot is probably not going to be sold for purpose of uh new construction. Um, at this point, we're really the thoughts are to have some green space in there and some parking. But uh that was also a decision that felt that uh needed to be brought to the council to get their input, so I would have to say that I would also agree with Jim. I I think it makes sense to have that lot as uh part of the City Hall lot, and it's not likely that there's going to be a new building put in there. But uh that's just, again, an opinion, and really don't know if that would be of some use for some operations, so.
Thank you, John. Any other views? I guess my my view would be, and we've already talked about the need for some green space in our main street area. We've talked about some need for additional parking, and we're accomplishing that uh potentially with this plan. I'm not sure it's in the interest of the the city to put a building back in there because that would then cause both problems with parking as well as um, you know, the lack of green space, and we have other, you know, we have a healthy downtown, and you know, nearly every other business is fully occupied and and ongoing concern. This one has not been for many years. Any other views? Turning back to the chair of City Hall Committee, does that give you the direction you're looking for? And you're still muted.
I guess that's a question Bob, I need to ask Sharon because it's it's a staff, you know, it's it's falls on into the policy for our change order policy, so the staff can make the decision themselves, and if they just want a direction from from the council, and Sharon, does that give you direction?
I think I can sense answer my support in the direction of combining the the lots. Um, as you uh pointed out early on in your discussion as an option.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Jim?
Um, the only other thing I'd like to add is is with Glenn's retirement, I believe it's Friday, Scott Vandermeilin has joined the City Hall Committee as the um liaison between City Hall Committee and our contractors. So I want to welcome Scott aboard, so thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Jim. Uh, we'll move then to council member individual items. Um Jim, let's stay on your end, and since you have your computer off mute, and we'll start on your end.
I have several things I would like to bring up. Um, a lot of positive things happened in the city in the last two weeks. I want to start with uh I, with our neighbor had a graduate graduate, uh it'd be a week and a half ago, and the bang-up job that Studio One and all the folks did on that to give those students some type of closure to their high school career. I I know that Alex was involved and and so many other people, I don't want to start naming names, but they just did a wonderful job, and it it went off really well. Um, I, and then I was out last Monday, and I know the previous city council meeting was brought up that there's kind of a, you feel negative with the COVID going on, and by the city staff, the city council approving the use of our picnic tables. Um, the people who had them set up were more than pleased with the city staff. I had one restaurant owners tell me not only did Preston come banging down the door, so did the street department to help us set up their um picnic tables. They were just very pleased, and I want to compliment the staff that we got a lot of compliments on just the help that they did to get those restaurants up and running. I think that's a um a plus to our staff, to our community, and it it added a positive uh um buyback into the city of Marshall. Uh, last I have is uh, we also last, I believe it was last Wednesday, we had a protest downtown, and I just want to say that that went off, and I I went down to it along with, I know Bob was there and Sharon was there. Um, it was just a positive for Marshall. I I don't care what side you're on, just the well, the way it was handled, the way our our city staff helped folks get across the street, it is just, it was a it was a good thing to see that protests and different views can be heard without having all the other noise going on or people throwing stuff. It was, it was a very positive vibe down there. It was a good feeling, and it was good to see all these young people out. We want to keep our young people in town. We need to support them to to give their voices and their views out. So I just want to say that the 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 police department did a wonderful job. Again, I, the fire department helping stop traffic for for the crowd to get across the road. You know, I think the biggest disruption was at one point, folks had to wait maybe through three red lights on College Drive Main Street for the folks across the road. Compliments the businesses that put water out for the, I don't know what you call them, protesters. Several of them had water out from the grab as they went, so it was, it was a community effort, which change comes when communities come together, and I think that was a good example of how our community does come together in tough situations. Um, and the last thing I want to ask about, and this is kind of to you, Steve. I've, you know, my, I've been following the cases in Lyon County, and since our last city council meeting, we have jumped a hundred and eleven cases, and I just, maybe you can tell the public, is there a reason why, and I'll let you answer that now, and I don't need to be called on again.
Okay, it, thank you, Jim, and Steve, I'll let you think about that, and when we get to your uh your turn, that's one of the things you can talk about. Okay? Um, so Russ, I'll turn to you.
Uh, just a couple of quick acknowledgements to city staff, one being Jason Anderson. I had a resident call me in my in my ward about some tall grass uh next to her, a couple houses away, and Jason had that taken care of within a couple of days, so thanks, Jason, for doing that. I I I apologize because I haven't sent you an email regarding that. And also to Dean Kudrin, uh there was some roughs intersection streets uh down by where I live, and I see that they dug a hole and they're ready to put patch in there in the next couple of days, so thanks to Dean and the street department as well. That's all I have.
Okay, John?
Uh, just mostly wanted to echo the thoughts that uh Jim had regarding the uh high school graduation. Uh, just also recognize that Studio One and Alex in particular is recognized by the uh high school staff, and a letter from Brian Jones or Principal Jones, so uh, just again, good recognition of a job well done by uh a good department, so thank you.
Okay, Craig?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I really don't have anything to add. I just, I guess the one thing I do want to talk about is the strength of the community and everybody's patience through COVID and and then the events of the last couple of weeks. I I acknowledge and appreciate that the the uh um protests and and uh meetings and and rallies that were held at the park and and in our community were were uh very proper, very appropriate, and uh I also just want to thank city staff for how hard they're And I also just want to thank city staff for how hard they're they're working with all the balls that we have in the air right now. You know, it's amazing that, you know, they're not technically, if you look from the outside in, they're not busy because our programs aren't running. And I think it would be a lot calmer and easier for all of our staff if they had their normal workload back. And I just want to thank everybody for how well they've adapted and and continue forward and serve the community all the way from from that. Our regular employees, the police department, fire department, everyone involved, just doing a stand up job. And and I just want to thank them and recognize them for that.
Thank you, Craig. Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in addressing Jim's concerns, I'll I'll do that at the end of my concerns. My first concern as a council member is, you know, we talked a little bit in the past about the sidewalks. And there's been a great deal of consternation and disagreement amongst ourselves and amongst the public as far as sidewalks. I think that, you know, there's a, there in some places sidewalks make sense. But I think that at some point in time, we as a council need to address the sidewalks and just putting them on the on the levy and taking over control of them because as I've been doing a lot more running and exercising, I'm trying to find new places in the city that I have very rarely traveled before. And a lot of those have the sidewalks and I hate to say it, but a lot of them, there's not one sidewalk aside from brand new ones that doesn't have disrepaired dangerous for runners, walkers sidewalks. So obviously, we're not taking care of them and we need to take care of them. And I think having the city take care of them, if we're going to require them and and tax be performed, we need to just assume responsibility for the maintenance. There's negotiations on the plowing of that. So that'd be my issue on that. The second issue on a positive, I actually discovered a gem that we have in Lion County, not necessarily with city. But there's a RV or an ATV, UTV park down in Russell that I went to. It's absolutely beautiful. It's on the DNR website and I encourage people to get out there. It's just really, really neat and supportive. Sixty five percent of the money comes from the grants from the DNR, but thirty five percent is self paid through clubs and private donations. So that's a really good, beautiful place for people who have ATVs or UTVs. And it's, it's only five miles long, but you can get bloody lost in there. It's really neat. Now with the COVID, so Councilmember Lazinski, you're right, there was a huge jump in the, over the past week in our cases. And we've been asked why the number is going up at such a huge rate. Well, there's a couple of reasons that we think are the cause. Number one, the virus is extremely contagious. And so there's a lot of community spread going on and obviously that causes increase in numbers. We've also expanded the testing, so more people are getting testing. With increased test perform, the number of positives goes up. To the best of my knowledge today, in the Southwest Health and Human Services, the growth in positive results has been associated with symptomatic patients, not from testing of asymptomatic people as yet. But we anticipate that may go up too. We also believe that some of the cases are going up because as we've all seen, people are getting tired of the next normal. A phrase that Sharon actually coined. And this is unfortunately reality. When you look at the weather, not right now, but over the past several days, it's beautiful. People want to get back to what they used to do. And you know what comes down to, it's not affecting me. I'm not sick. I'm going to do what I want. Nobody can tell me not to wear the mask. But again, the most important thing is that we be diligent about our health and protecting others because it spreads from people not adhering to those recommendations. So again, it remains important for all of us to stay home if you're sick, wash your hands multiple times. If you wash your hands five times a day, risks of infectivity from multiple respiratory viruses goes down by about forty five percent. Keep your six foot social distancing, wear the mask when you go out. The mask is not to protect you from catching COVID. It's protect somebody from catching COVID from you. So if two people wear their masks and they keep their six foot, the likelihood of infection occurring between those two is reduced to as much as it can possibly be. We've received some questions about people wanting to know about positive cases from specific employers. We can't, that that will never be allowed to be published. It's not our story to tell. There's a law called HIPAA. And I, as a healthcare worker and the hospital is a healthcare entity, are beholden by federal and state law at the risk of sizable penalties if we release that. Patients obviously can release their information. It's their story to tell, but it won't come from me as a doctor and it won't come from the hospital. Businesses can share in collaboration with public health if they opt to do so. But again, they are under no obligation legally to do so. And again, keep in mind that this is a highly contagious disease and everybody has to do their part as a community member to safeguard the health of our most vulnerable people. And I think I'll just stop there unless anybody else has further questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Steve. Does anyone have any questions for Steve? If not, we'll move to Glenn.
I have nothing to say.
Okay, I just have a couple of things. The first off, maybe building a little bit on what Steve had said too, the those businesses, those restaurants, the hair salons that, you know, have been allowed to open that were closed prior. They're opening with with protocols that are given to them by the state, by the Minnesota Department of Health. And I think I and I'm sure the rest of the council that has, you know, had their haircut or have been to a restaurant have experienced the how closely our businesses are following those protocols. So I guess my point is the, our retailers, our businesses are really taking it seriously to not only protect their employees, but also to protect their their customers. And I think that was gratifying to see. The, we continue to see the governor modifying the the directives of slowly moving the dial and opening some things up that can be safely opened up. And we've seen that over the past week. One of the items that was on that list was pools and aquatic centers. So our department, our staff has determined that they can, you know, assuming that the equipment all works, that they could safely open the aquatic center hopefully by June nineteenth. So that's, that's their goal. It takes a bit of time to, you know, fill the pool, to clean the pool, to get the chemical balance proper and to get the staff in place. But I know both Preston and Scott Vandermillen that they have said that that's what their goal is. So that should be welcome news to families in the community. There's additional guidance that will be, is suggested by the governors and Minnesota Department of Health that by late June, early July, some other activities like organized summer sports may be loosened up even even more. And then I'll say one final thing about the the events of last Wednesday as well as last Thursday. And as Jim and others on the council have said, the, you know, it's commendable that it was well organized. People exercised their First Amendment rights to free speech and to assemble, but they did it in a respectful and peaceful way. I I'd also like to commend our our staff and in particular, you know, Chief Marshal on the preparedness that I think all of our public safety did to have things in place that ensured that that our public was was safe. And so there was, it was probably a good experience all the way around in that respect. With that, we'll move then to our staff reports. Sharon?
Mr. Mayor and Council, just a one correction in the admin brief that was included in the packet. I thought Brad Rose's last date was going to be August seventh and his last date is going to be August twenty first. And I don't know if they're going to have some kind of reception for him, but I just wanted to correct that for the record. Late for last week, I also had a telephone conference call with Senator Dames. And he did invite the area city administrators to talk about the CARES Act funding. There is six hundred and sixty seven million dollars available statewide. The House and Senate could not agree on how to disperse that prior to the end of the regular session. So that'll be a future, potentially a future special session discussion, unless the governor has the authority to decide how to disperse that if the if the two houses cannot agree. And again, the Senate version is favorable to the city of Marshall. And I say again that projections, predictions on impacts on expenses or revenues is still ongoing. I know that we're continuing to look at impacts on revenue. For example, I know that this week we've had a brief discussion on the gas tax and how it relates to municipal state aid, which early, my early spreadsheet on revenue, revenue constraints did not include that. So that's something we want to input into that too. But again, still ongoing lots we need to to learn yet. And of course, now that business is opening up, we may, we may tend fairly well in certain areas better than expected. The the, as you are aware, the Archery Park grand opening was rescheduled, did not rain this afternoon. However, the wind did pick up and those, that was another factor in rescheduling it to this Friday at at one o'clock. And at that point on Friday, we are allowed to have additional people attend where we don't have that opportunity today. And then Glenn Olson's retirement reception, which is going to be following safe protocols for COVID, is going to be Thursday from four to five thirty with a program at five thirty. So this is an emotional week for Glenn. Did have a short conversation with him today just about some of the highlights of his career and people who have made impacts on his career here in in the city of Marshall. So it's a good sign when when you're sad about leaving a place, it means that it's meant a lot to him on a on a personal level. So and then just finally, talking about the next normal, as council member Meister mentioned, it seems like staff is kind of getting back to some of some of their more normal work right now. Maybe less coronavirus discussion this week, not for everybody, but for most of us. And for me personally, it's been nice to kind of reengage with with staff, with regular staff meetings that I haven't been able to do as much as I wanted to when this first began. So maybe less conversations with the police chief and more with the kind of ensuring the other staff, I have discussions with them. So I really enjoyed that. And and with the police chief, we kind of get to talk about other things other than coronavirus too. So that is my report for this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sharon. Any questions for Sharon? If not, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. The Mill and Overlay project is going well. You've probably noticed the mill in town and there, that that came in on Monday and they're they're resurfacing roads right now. So that's going very well. Bit opening next week for the Legion Pond project. That'll come back to council at the next meeting. Councilman Bear Coler pointed out to our staff and myself and to Preston that there was a washout in the bike trail at Independence Park over the culverts between the two ponds. And we're investigating that as maybe a little more serious concern. So we're we're reviewing options to potentially do some sewer repairs and there's some sanitary sewer repairs. So we're we're reviewing that and we'll be coming forward at some point to to discuss that, I I think. So still trying to assess what that means. Yeah, and I guess lastly, I'll just reiterate what Sharon said. Glenn's party is on Thursday in Lot B three, so stop out.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions for Jason? Jim, do you have anything? Dennis?
A few items. Thank you, Mayor and Council. And following up on what a lot of other people have previously said, Councilmember Labatt, yes, this is the time for junk pickup and unmold lawn. Get a lot of attention with staff. So following through on a number of those, the South First Street project, all of the preliminary documents were provided today and have been reviewed. And so that one should be set to go. Buffalo Ridge Platte, which is required a lot of, just a lot of little legal detail work, that's finally set to go. And so I think that'll assist in that Allegiant Field Road flood control project that Jason just mentioned. And Councilmember De Kramer, the MMU employment contract for the new general manager was completed today and I believe has been sent out to the applicant. And it is hopefully brought before the MMU commission at their next meeting, which I think is sixteenth, I think it's next week. And then the EDA did close on the sale of lots to the to UCAP. So they purchased four more lots for the development of income housing. And then we've also entered into an agreement to sell an additional lot that's De Kramer indicated.
Thank you, Dennis. Any questions for Dennis? If not, you have the remaining items, the administrative brief, which Sharon referenced already, the information items between the building permits and the listing of upcoming meetings. Is there anything else to come forward in this regular council meeting?
I move adjournment.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to adjourn any discussion on the motion. If not, we'll do a voice vote on this. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. We will now reconvene as the the Housing and Redevelopment Authority at this time.